Okay. Call the meeting to order. Let's rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for roll call, we do have every, everyone present tonight. I do not have any exact session announcements for tonight. Write that down. We'll move right into public comment. I didn't receive any forms, but, John?
Sorry, Mr. Rossi.
Good, how are you?
Good evening. First, I want to say, bringing my daughter back to Pots Grove was the best move I ever made. She's doing great, thank you. Now, for the not-so-pleasant thing I want to say. I'm a little upset. My daughter, my seventeen-year-old daughter informed me, a little late, which seventeen-year-olds do, we have midterms, which I knew when I say Thursday and Friday of this week. She was informed that there's no transportation to tech school. She has to find her own way to and from tech school. I'm going to start out by saying, totally unacceptable. She does not drive, I'm a single father, I work thirty miles away, I need it five forty-five in the morning to go to work. I can't be late. I'm the only one that does my job. Now, that being said, she only has midterms on Thursday. She has no midterms on Wednesday, no midterms on Friday. I'm sure she's not the only one that goes to tech school that doesn't have midterms every day. Talked to our cosmetology teacher today. She has to make up all hours missed. What I'm saying is, if our mission is support the children, then we better support the children, and if we participate in tech school, we better get our kids there. I don't care if they happen to take a minivan. But there should be transportation at the high school, once they get off their bus, Monday, I mean Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and transportation taking them home, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, back to the high school like normal. I don't understand why there's not. I know we're getting out different times. We have elementary schools, we have the centers, we have the elementary school, middle school, and high school to get out of school, and it takes a lot of transportation. I understand that, because I work in a school this week, but there should be no reason why. My daughter has to find her, or any other child, has to find their own way to and from tech school, back to regular school these three days, and they have to make up their, she has to make up her missed hours. It's going to be six point two five hours, and she has to somehow make up to graduate, to get her points to go on next year. So, my feeling is, after discussing it with Ms. Reiner, she's the one that kind of helped me with the information, and then talking to tech school, there better be some kind of transportation Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday for these kids to get back and forth to tech school. That's my feeling. There's no reason why we can't get our kids back and forth to the school they go to. I don't understand, I don't understand why we can't take them. When there are, not kids don't have exams every day. You know, and this piggybacks on what I came last time about, of her having to miss a class because she has a lab that double laps, and so she has to miss English class to take a double lab class. You know, I know it's a scheduling issue, but she needs to get to tech school. She can't stay at home and miss three day, or two. She's going to miss Thursday because she has exams, but she can't, she's not going to, she has none on Wednesday and Friday. None. I mean, I know it's Tuesday night, and it's probably, at this point, there's not a darn thing we can do about it, but it's got to be, look, this can't happen. If tech school's open, and our kids go to tech school, it's Pots Grove's responsibility to get them there, not, well, if you can get there, you get there, if you drive, you drive. Well, our kids aren't required to have a driver's license to go to school, so that's out the window. My kid doesn't drive, and I won't give her a driver's license. So, we got, this is a problem. I think it's an issue for her to have to make up six point two five hours, it's an issue. So, we need to look into this and figure out how we can fix this, so this doesn't happen.
Thank you, Ms. Rossi. I just one question from when you started. You were, what kind of information did you get from, from the high school regarding the midterms?
When she had her exams, I didn't, but my daughter tells me one thing, I go to the source to get the right information, when her exam days were, what day she didn't have exams. So, before I came up here and said anything, I wanted to make sure I had fact. Also, the fact that she has to make up her hours at tech, at tech school. I got that from her IEP teacher here, and I also called tech school and got a rate from her teacher at tech school that she has to make up her hour.
Was there any information regarding transportation to tech school?
Yeah, I told her was none. I was told there is none. They have, they have to find their own way.
Okay, did that come across on the document? That's what I'm, did you know, did you see a document?
No, I was told by her. She was told by the school that there was no transportation for her, she needed to find her own way there.
Well, we'll look, we'll look into that for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rossi.
Yeah, thank you.
Before I, I just want to make sure that that was the only public comment, before we move into the, to the next section. Okay, so we have reported, Superintendent, thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. At this time, we'd like to talk about our preliminary budget. Mr. Nester is going to give us our preliminary presentation regarding that status, and as you remember, we adopted a resolution November agreeing not to go above the adjusted index. So, with that said, Mr. Nester will move forward.
We tried to do something a little different this year. I know, I know you all, when you get your presentations, you sneak to the back of the presentation and see the, see the bottom line, so I decided to start with the end in mind, and give you the, give you the presentation, give you the deep, where we're at at this point in time, and then tell you how we got there, rather than have you hang on to your, your seats until the end of the, end of the presentation. Okay. Where we stand as of today, factoring in projections of all the, all the income and expenses that we anticipate for the upcoming fiscal year, we're starting the budget season with a $1.9 million shortfall. Of that amount, we're anticipating using $750,000 of our Peasars Reserve to offset that increase, or that, that tax deficit, leaving us with a adjusted budget shortfall of $1.2 million.
Can I ask a question before we get too far? It says, and you stated current budget shortfall, but this isn't the current budget, correct? Because we didn't vote on a preliminary budget. This is the administration's requested budget?
It's the current, it's the current status of the budget that's in our system, yes. It's not, it hasn't been approved by anyone. This is just the current status of our, of our seventeen eighteen budget.
Dave, I have a question, too.
Sure.
When was the last time we used any money from the Peasars Reserve?
We've budgeted for it to date. We have not needed to use it. We've had results that have come in stronger than anticipated. This year that we're in, we had budgeted to use $900,000. We won't know if we're going to use all or any of that until we see the fiscal results at the end of the year.
And last year, how much did we budget and not use?
Last year was $500,000, I believe.
Okay. So, so we've never used the money from the Peasars Reserve?
At this point, we have not used it.
And how much money is in the Peasars Reserve?
Six million four hundred and either twenty-five or seventy-five thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
And to that extent, you have a copy of a piece of paper at your place with a plan, yes, the blue and orange. That's the planned usage of the Peasars Reserve for, for your viewing pleasure. So, so bottom line, where we stand right now, if we were to try and balance the budget today, we would need a property tax increase of approximately 3% to achieve that. Now, this is the starting point. Lots of things will change between now and June. We're starting to get some retirements. We'll get, right now, we're not budgeting any new money from the state. That could, that would have, could have significant impact. Any number of things are going to change between here and the end of the, end of the cycle, and it typically goes in a positive direction during that, that period of time. Okay, now, how did we get here? We start with Act One, and the index, and just a refresher here, the index that we use for Act One is comprised of two components. It's the average, the statewide average weekly wage, that is a Pennsylvania average of employment throughout the state, and the employment cost index for elementary and secondary schools. That's a national index specifically focused on K-12 schools. So, that's how the index is created, the base index is created, and then poorer districts like Pots Grove are permitted to raise taxes by a little bit more, the index is inflated a little bit. So, here's a, here's a history of our index over the last five years. You can see in 2012, 13, and 13, 14, our tax increase was slightly above the adjusted index. In those years, we used a small amount of our exceptions that we were granted to, to balance the budget. But in the last three years, we were significantly under, under the index that we could raise taxes with a 1.9, a .55, and a 0% this past year. And obviously, this year is to be determined, and over on the left of the slide, you'll see what the historical high and lows were since the inception of Act One in 2006. So, based on our Act One index, we are permitted to raise property taxes this year by 3.3% without going to referendum or seeking exceptions. So, that's the limit that we elected to stay within. And if we were to do that, that would be a 1.24 mil increase with an average, increase of $149 to the average homeowner in Pots Grove. Right now, to balance the budget, it would be 1.13 mils, 3%, and which would be $136 to the average homeowner. Now, where do our money, where does our money come from, and where does it go? From a revenue perspective, this is different across the state, but down in southeastern Pennsylvania, you'll see this, or maybe even a little bit more skewed, where the vast majority of our revenue comes from our local economy. Out of a total of $64.4 million, 43.8% or 69% comes from, from our local economy, about 30% from the state and 1% from the federal government. Now, this, while it looks very bad to our local taxpayers, was very valuable in 2015, 16, when we didn't have a budget for nine months of the year. That's how we were able to, to survive that without too much pain when other districts were really struggling. This is a picture of our local revenues. The large purple section of the pie is our property taxes, which represent 80% of our, 88% of our local revenue. That generates $38.8 million to Pots Grove School District. The next, what's it, 38.8 million. Earned income tax is the next largest, that generates about $2.9 million, and that's about 6.6% of local revenues. State sources, here's a laundry list of various subsidies that we receive. This year, in our budget, we have an increase of approximately $197,000 in the basic ed funding. The vast majority of that is the result of the state not passing their budget until July last year, so we have a little bit more money, we got a little bit more money than we anticipated when we had to pass our budget. But the property tax relief allocation is always a question. Retirement contributions are going to be going up because retirement payments are going up, and the Ready to Learn Block Grant is a new, new funding stream the last few years. Hopefully, that continues. From an expenditure side, graphically presented, 70% of our budget is comprised of salaries and benefits. That totals $46.6 million of our budget. Following that, the next two columns, which are, no pointer. The yellow, excuse me. The yellow, there we go. The yellow in the green box there on the bottom are debt service, which is approximately $5.5 million, and transportation and tuition, the 500 series, which is about $5.3 million. They constitute about 8% of the budget each. Now, that's, that was the projection, the presentation from the type of expense, from a function, from how, how it's used. The salaries in the first, the first graph indicate the salaries for teachers, administrators, custodians, secretaries, everything lumped together. This is a presentation of how we spend the money from a functional standpoint. 57% is spent on direct student education, and then the rest is spent on some form of support for that direct instruction. And you'll see 8% is expended in operations and maintenance, that's all of our utilities, all of our custodial and maintenance staff, any repairs and maintenance throughout the district. Debt service accounts for 8%, that's again, $5 million, a little bit more than $5 million annually. Administration is 6%, and technology and transportation are 4% each. So, you can see how we, how we allocate our resources amongst the various departments. Now, going into specifics for 2017-18, we have had some positives. We have a continuing trend in increased transfer taxes and increased earned income taxes. That's a, a positive indication for our economy, but unfortunately, those taxes are relatively small in comparison to, to the increases in expenses that you'll see in a moment. Some of our continued challenges that we have, I'm going to take some time at the end here to talk about the potential of property tax elimination, but our retirement rates continue to rise. Our salary increases, based on our contractual agreements, call for, for annual salary increases, and there's uncertainty in state subsidies. This year, the, the state has done a fairly good job of filling the budget gaps with one-time revenues, but they're running out of magic. There's, there's not a whole lot of one-time items out there to grab onto anymore. So, currently, we're, they're looking at about a $600 million shortfall in this year's budget, and it's projected to be about $3 billion hole going into next year's budget, without any increases in funding. So, we don't know where, where subsidies are going to go for the, for the future, and certainly charter school tuitions. Now, from an expenditure standpoint, this is what's changed this year. Overall, our total expenditures are up about $1 million. There's three main drivers to that. That's wages, which are up 2.9%, retirement, which is up 11.8%, and healthcare, which currently is up 9%. Now, we hope that goes down. We, we base this on our first-look rates, and we traditionally get better information later in the year, so we're hoping that goes down. The retirement rate is a function of salaries, and the salaries are a function of contractual agreements. So, so those are the three drivers. On the bottom, you'll see some areas that we have some savings, and I want to talk about the inter-fund transfers a little bit. I don't know if you'll recall, but when the budget passed in 15-16, in April last year, there was no plan con money provided for in the budget, but there was separate legislation that authorized the Commonwealth Financing Authority to borrow funds to pay the plan con monies to districts in the, in the system. We didn't anticipate that that would be received by June 30th, so we didn't, we budgeted for it as revenue in the current year, but we didn't want it to impact our budget in the current year, so we budgeted a corresponding inter-fund transfer. The amount of those two items is $850,000. So, $850,000 of this decrease is purely because of this budget line. As it turned out, at the eleventh hour, our auditor said we needed to accrue that money back to last year. So, we did that, and that became part of our surplus that we talked about for 15-16 earlier. So, we over, we over-budgeted the revenue, and we over-budgeted the expenditure in this category. The second component is, we refinanced the Vocation, Votech School debt this past year, and that saved the district $424,000. We didn't want to incur a, a savings in one year and then need to raise taxes the next year, so we, we took that savings and budgeted for an equivalent inter-fund transfer. Okay? Doesn't mean we have to do it, but that's where it is in the budget. And our debt service went down a little bit.
Why is that?
We refinanced some things last year, too. Right. On the revenue side, again, if you look at the bottom, there's a $936,000 plan con reimbursement there. Eight hundred and fifty, we just talked about. The rest is a result of lower reimbursements projected on existing debt. But you'll see, the biggest increase is our Peasars contribution for $497,000. The state pays half of the increase that we're going to pay, and that's what is represented there. Social Security is going up by $34,000. That's based on the increase in salaries, and our basic ed and special ed subsidies are going up slightly.
So, Dave, what is our net increase on Peasars?
Our net increase is about $500,000.
Of which, we're, we're, we, we are budgeting $750,000 from Peasars Reserve?
Correct. Now, if you look at it, keep in mind, there was $900,000 used last year in the, in the prior year budget. So, if we used $900,000 last year, and then this year, even if we were even, even if Peasars didn't go up, there'd be a $900,000 hole. Okay? So, we have to step it up and down in increments, so it doesn't have a drastic impact on any one year. So, there will be a time where, where we're relatively flat on Peasars, but we're still using some of the, some of the Peasars Reserve in the future. Okay, so that's, that's how we got to the budget. Basically, we're up a million dollars in net expenditures. Our revenues are relatively flat in total. Expenditures went up about a million dollars, so that, that's the hole we're trying to fill. And since we budgeted for a $900,000 use of Peasars Reserve or fund balance, whatever you want to call it, last year, that's how we got to the $1.9 million shortfall that we're trying to fill. Okay? Now, property tax elimination. This has been getting a lot of play lately in the legislature and in, and in all the support groups supporting public education. And I thought, even though it hasn't been proposed, and we don't know what a current piece of legislation might look like, we know what the last iteration looked like, and I wanted to explain what property tax is to you guys, what property tax elimination is to you folks and to the public, so that when you hear it talked about, you know what it, what it means, because it's not necessarily what the first thing that comes to your mind is. First off, it's not the complete elimination of property taxes. There we go. First off, the county, the county municipal taxes are still going to be levied, so you're still going to have that component that you do, the April payments. Okay? But included in the last, last bill was the permission for school districts to retain that portion of their millage that's needed to pay their current debt, but only until that debt's paid off. That's a key part we want to get to in a little bit. So, for Pots Grove, that's somewhere between 15 and 20% of our, of our property tax levy that we would get to keep, even if property tax elimination would go through, under the last plan. There would be increases in other taxes. Your personal income tax would increase from 3.07 to 4.95%, so that's a 1.88% increase. So, it's pretty easy for you to go and look at your W-2, multiply it by 2%, that's about how much you're going to pay in additional state income tax. Also, sales taxes are projected to go from 6% to 7%, and to subject more items, including food and clothing, to the sales tax. This is the, this is the wild card in the whole thing, from whether or not you make money, you save money or not, because in most cases, here in, in, in our community, I would think that your property tax, if you're a homeowner, will be more than your increase in state income tax. But your, your individual spending habits are going to determine whether you're a winner or a loser here in Pots Grove, because, oops, if you, if you go to the grocery store and you spend $300 a week, that's now going to be $321. If you go out to dinner and you spend $100 for a dinner for your family, now that's going to be $101, because there's going to be another dollar of tax. It, it's just, it's, it's cumulative, it's, it's small increments, but often. So, it's, you, there are some calculators out there, it's really worth you sitting down and trying to determine whether you're a winner or a loser under this scenario. Some other provisions that are important. Any future debt that you would need to operate a school district, if we needed to renovate one of our buildings because we have an imminent housing development moving into the area, and we needed to borrow $10 million, that would be subject to referendum. We would have to go to our community and ask them, not if they would accept an increase in property taxes, but would you accept an increase in earned income tax or the creation of a personal income tax? The concept, as it's presented, is that districts would get dollar for dollar what they would lose in property taxes. I keep saying in concept, and so if, if that happens, we, it might not be bad, but if that happens. There is a proposed annual increase in that number, based on the statewide average weekly wage, the lower of the statewide average weekly wage, or the collections of personal income tax, sales tax, and hotel occupancy tax. So, in theory... So, in theory, there's an index built into the, to the calculation, so we wouldn't have to come to you and say, "We need a 3 percent increase" because it would already be in But what if it's not? What if it's zero? What if it's minus? There's, there's questions there. What, what happens in a bad economy? There clearly be some winners. Retirees who basically don't pay any personal income tax because their primary source of revenue is social security and pension. That have a home with real estate taxes that they would get eliminated, a portion of which they get eliminated. And that use a standard deduction for federal tax reporting purposes. Because then they would not lose the deduction for the, for the property taxes. Everybody else, if your income tax increase is less than your property tax decrease, you're going to lose deductions on your tax return, on your federal tax return. And that'll also depend on what your marginal tax bracket is, how much that, that costs you. The other one that, the other item which is, which is very, very important is that businesses that do not pay personal income tax, in other words, corporations or whatever that are not subject to personal income tax, this is property tax elimination for them too. Okay?
So, Glaxo's not paying?
Glaxo, Merck, Walmart.
King of Prussia Mall?
King of Prussia Mall. Paradise Donuts.
I'm just going to interject here for a second. This is... Excuse me, Dave. This is the aspect of this that really is baffling to me because, because how is the state going to be able to afford to make up? I mean, tho, those big property owners, those, the King of Prussia Mall is what keeps, makes the Upper Marion School District hum. You take, you take away that revenue stream and now, now you're putting it on the taxpayers in the state? How, how are they possibly going to pay for this?
The projection that PASBO's done is that this is a $2 billion shift of taxes from business to individuals.
Right. Do people understand that? I guess not. All right.
There will be a bunch of losers, but you're going to have to determine that on your own, you know, on your own personal situation. But let me, let me give you an example, and this one's been, this is kind of the poster child for the failure of this, of this bill. Reading School District, because they're, they're such a poor district and they have a significant amount of debt, about 93 percent of their debt, or 93 percent of their property taxes, they would be able to retain to pay their debt. So, residents of Reading School District under this plan would be subject to increased earned personal income tax, increased sales tax, and they wouldn't get any property tax relief, or very little. So, there, there are other stories throughout the state, but that, that seems to be the, the poster child at this point. And... Let me see here. The one thing I just want...
Dave, can I, can I just ask you something? So, they, they pay the tax until the debt is paid off, correct?
Correct.
Taxpayers. What happens when the school district incurs more debt?
They would have to, if the Reading School District needed to borrow more money, or if Potts Grove School District needed to borrow more money, we'd have to put a referendum on the ballot in the, in the May election, asking the local taxpayers if they would agree to an increase in their earned income tax by 3 percent to, to allow us to build a new school.
So, basically, they, they would never incur debt because no taxpayer's ever going to...
I, I don't want to say that. I think there, I think there'll be a, a period of time where there's a, a series of referendum requests that are defeated, because that's the, the initial thought process. But I think at some point in time, the community will become so disenchanted with the conditions of the buildings that there'll be, it'll change. But there'll, but there'll be a period of time, there'll be a painful period of time in there, based on what we've seen in other states. This is not unique. This is not unique. Other, other states have that, that concept. Alls I wanted to get across is that it's not, most people, I think, hear property tax relief and they think, "Okay, I pay X in property taxes and I'm going to save X." And it's not nearly that. You're, you're sa, you might save something or you might, might lose something, but it's not going to be nearly as much as what on the surface it, it sounds like. Some other implications, just, just from a logistics standpoint, we get about 80 percent of our property taxes in August or September. If this would go into place effective July 1st in any given year, it would take them a minimum of 90 days until businesses remitted their first Pennsylvania income tax payment and individuals made their first estimated income tax payment. Or it's going to take a while for employers to even make, computerize the change so that you can make the withholdings proper. And then after that, after they collect the money, they have to figure out how to divvy it up, and then they have to distribute it. So, it could be, it could be nine months until we see our first payment from the new sales and, and income taxes. So, those first couple of years, I think there's going to be, going to be a challenge. Potential loss of local control. Right now, you folks have the ability to weigh ideas and, and the cost of those ideas and whether or not it's good for Potts Grove School District. If we're locked into an amount of money, you may not have the choice. You may not, you know, you may not want to change the mass program because you just Disparity in funding is going to be locked in. So, if everybody gets what they're going to get this year plus an index, then any changes in your community have no bearing. If you're a growing school district, you're going to get the same amount. If you're a dwindling school district, population's going down, you're going to get the same amount. So, it's going to lock in any, any disparity. And that's a, a big, a big issue amongst a lot of the more rural areas because Southeast PA, since we pay, since we fund most of our education locally through property taxes, we would get most of this money. And so, those other districts that rely more heavily on the state would get much less.
I have a question. Any thought yet as how this would affect charter school payments, how they're funded?
There has been no conversation of any changes to how charter schools are funded. So, if we have more kids going to charter schools, we'll pay more money, regardless of whether we have money coming in.
So, our schools will fall apart. Parents will see these beautiful school buildings called charter schools. And we'll end up having to pay the same amount as we are, well, with the increases.
With that, whatever increases, correct. As, as it stands now, I have heard no, no changes to how charter schools are funded. And I think it would have to be part of a different leg, piece of legislation.
Charles, Nipper Pleasantview Road. Question on the second order effect of this change. If you eliminate or drastically reduce property taxes, then you're enhancing the investment qualities of real estate. So, what would be the projected effects on real estate prices and hence the community if this proposal were to go through?
I'd like to say that that's been considered, but it, I haven't considered that at this point. I know realtors, realtors are very excited. I'm not sure exactly why. What I, what I've heard is that for every X dollars of savings in your, in your mortgage payment, it equals Y val, in your value of your house. But just because your mortgage goes down doesn't mean you're spending less money.
The advantage, in my opinion, to Potts Grove, if there is an advantage to us specifically, is that this would effectively eliminate the disparity between the relative property tax rates between us and our neighboring school districts who pay much less than we do in property taxes. So, our advantage, as I see it, not diminishing the concerns that you're raising even a little bit, but our advantage is now, when someone is considering moving here, whether it's a business or a, well, a business or a individual, you know, right now, they look at Springfield and have a 26 or 27 millage rate versus us in the high 30s. They can get the same house for the same money effectively in that district versus ours and then they're paying a couple of thousand dollars less per year in property taxes. And I think that that disparity would be lessened significantly or might even go away. And that would be a big advantage to the local economy, I think. But whether, but it wouldn't really have any impact on the school district in terms of its revenue sources because we're not getting any more revenue, right? I mean, that's the bottom line. Do we still get transfer taxes or would that...
Yeah, you'd still be entitled to all your other minimal taxes, your Act 511 taxes.
So, a little bit more hum in the economy might increase our revenue a little bit. But, but anyway, those are just some thoughts that I had on the subject.
So, there are some other things here. I don't think we need to talk about them at this point in time, but, you know, they're there for you to review. The last thing I wanted to do, and certainly I'll be here for any questions you may have. But how we're going to move forward from this point is that we're going to try and hold our future budget discussions as part of the Operations and Facilities Committee meetings. So, we've extended the timeline for the next three Operations and Facilities Committee meetings, so we have a little bit more time to talk. Everything will be reported out then at the second meeting of the month. So, the, these are the dates and times of those meetings as they come up. Obviously, on May 9th, we're going to be looking to probably get an approval for a proposed final budget so that we can pass a, pass a final budget in, at our June meeting. But, you know, hold on to your hats. We'll see what comes in the next few months. It's, it's looking like it's going to be an interesting spring.
How does the fair funding formula work into this now that that's been adopted, although the funding of it is, remains an open question? Does this remove that completely? You had mentioned in your presentation that some of the disparities would be locked in. Would the fair funding formula not, despite its slow pace, eventually level those out?
The equitable, equitable funding is, is purely on the basic ed funding stream. And I don't see anything in this that generates additional funding for the state that they would be able to fund more in the basic ed funding stream. But to the extent that any new money is added to that, that revenue stream, it would be distributed amongst the, you know, the growing districts or the, or the poorer districts.
So, it exists on paper only unless they decided to fund it.
Right. It's, it's, the, the new funding formula is only based on new money going into the system. So, the existing funding would stay the same and then any new, new revenue that's introduced would be...
Goes in, is, is, new revenue is divided up according to that formula.
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Dave, one quick question. In regards to the overall budget, going back to...
Yes.
The actual budget part. How much of the new budget is actually one-time expense versus a yearly expense?
The vast majority is just ongoing costs. You know, I highlighted the three major components of the increase in expenditures.
I understand that, but I'm just asking for an, an approximate number.
It's all ongoing expenses. There are no special...
Nothing for text, textbooks? There's not one?
Well, we have, we have textbooks, but we have textbooks budgeted for in all of our budgets. And quite frankly, that was a component of our budget surpluses the last couple of years because we've been trying to get our, our teachers on board and go, everybody rowing in the same direction. So, we weren't buying stuff. We were working on building relationships. So, now, we're at a point where we're ready to go on, on those textbook adoptions. So, but we, we consider textbooks and those types of things, ongoing operations. They're not one-time hits.
I have one more thing before we move on. So, I, I've been sort of dancing around it with my questions about Peasars'. And I'm just wondering out loud, I mean, to your point, if you use a fund balance, even if it's a planned fund balance that, in year A, then it sets up a hole in year B, and I get that. But given that we haven't used the money in the plan, in, in the plan for quite a few years, of course, we just, we won't know about next, this budget year until the fall, correct?
Correct.
As to whether we'll use the 900,000 that's planned. I'm just wondering if, if one place to chip away a little bit at this deficit might be to use a little bit more than is in the plan? I don't have a number in, in my mind. I'm just thinking out loud.
It, it certainly was in the board's discretion to use fund balance as it, as it sees fit. The other thing that I'm somewhat concerned about, though, as we go through this, is if we look at our capital reserve and how much we're expecting to spend this year, and if this comes into fruition with the property tax elimination, the inability to borrow in the future, we may need to save now so that we can operate into the future.
Wow, that's a good question. If this law got passed, which I honestly still don't believe that it will, but, and again, I didn't think we'd have the president that we have now, so don't listen to me. But if, if this law is passed, then it'll be based on what budget year?
We haven't seen the piece of legislation yet. So, we, we're looking at something that's a year old. When it was a year old and it was voted down, it would have gone into effect on July 1st.
So, that would mean that, let's just play out the scenario. Let's say we, we went temporarily insane and we, we just raised taxes by the amount in this budget of 3 percent. And that law got passed, it would be essentially nullified? What I'm asking is, is where would, where will the base, what would the baseline be based on?
Yeah, no, no, I get...
I don't want to raise taxes, but, but if they're going to eliminate the taxes, maybe I do want to raise taxes to raise our baseline. I mean, that's crazy, but...
Well, in, in that document that was done last year, not only, there was two things. One, the borrowings were cut off on December 31st prior. So, there's districts out there borrowing money now to, to fund projects that in that scenario, I don't know what they would do because they wouldn't have the ability to fund it. But the, in, in that last iteration, July 1st of 2016 was the, the date that the new taxes would go into effect and the old taxes would go away. So, yes, to answer your question, if we, if we were going along the process and we decided to pass a 3 percent increase, I don't think we would be able to, under, under that last scenario. Now, now, can that possibly happen? I don't see how. But that was what was in the legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Nestor. And obviously, more to follow as we get into committee work. And our plan is obviously to report out, you know, to the board after our, after our committees, keep everybody up to date. What I'd like to do now is talk about the superintendent goals. You know, I've been working on these really for, you know, throughout the fall and, and, you know, the anticipation of these goals was to get to a point where we had an opportunity to share this information with the board, which I have, with our administrators and tonight with the public. It was important because of transition. Normally, these goals would be done closer to the fall time period, but because of transitions that took place in the district administratively, it's, it's worked us to, to this particular point. The four highlighted areas that I have for my superintendent goals are to increase student achievement, to improve the professional development, which ties into our student achievement, to have a balanced budget, to balance the 1718 budget while maintaining... achievement, to have a balanced budget, to balance the 1718 budget while maintaining the integrity of classroom instructional programs and co-curricular activities. That's really the challenge of the budget process because we don't want to lose anything we currently have. So, we have to be able to, to, you know, analyze, work the process and obviously work with the community and the board to maintain that integrity. I think that's first and foremost as we, as we look at the process and obviously, you know, coming in with the lowest possible tax increase depending on, as Dave just mentioned, what that will look like. And also, I think it's important that my fourth goal is to provide timely and relevant communication to each stakeholder group. And we're going to take a look at community surveys. We're going to take a look at teacher surveys. We want to have in, input from our administrative teams so that we can best serve the community that is before us. Specifically, a couple of things with student achievement. I really want the community to understand that we're serious about our static test line, which is our PSSA. This year, we're going to take a look at our PSSA math and ELA scores in grades three through five. And our goal for this year is to, to be above or higher as far as the state average is concerned. I think it's important that all, that we, we are proficient with, with our scores in PSSA math and ELA and how that compares to the state average. That's really the first goal. I think from that point moving forward, then we take a look at how, how much better we can get. Another thing that we will look at moving forward will be the growth. It's important to know how our students are growing from year to year, but I think it's important this year to really say, to, to really put a bullseye on our goals in grades three through eight and make sure that we're basically green across the screen in both math and ELA. As far as our Keystone tests are concerned, we are looking at first-time test takers because that's what we have control over. And last year, our percentage was 29% of our first-time test takers scored proficient or above. We're looking to increase that by 11% to 40. Our first-time text takers in English Lit, we were 70%. We are looking to raise that to 75%. And then, of course, our Keystone Bio test takers, our first-time text taker scores was 61%. We're looking at raising that to 66. So, under each goal, under those specific goals, we have action steps that really we have worked on since day one. And our, and our, our process is to, to have our administrators and our directors look at each goal and how that affects their particular area. And then, from there, that information, they will take that information, how that affects them in their buildings and grade level and down to the classrooms. So, my goal specifically is to have buy-in, have skin in the game, if you will, with our, with our stakeholders at all levels. It's very, very important that our faculty members understand what the bullseye is, what the target is, so that they can help achieve these goals for the betterment of our, of our children. I have been around to the districts. I have, you know, one more building to go to as far as talking about the goals, but I've, the teachers have been really receptive as far as the goals are concerned. They like the idea of, of knowing what the goal is and how to attain that goal, and that has been well received. So, from the increase to student achievement, we specifically talk about the professional development goes along with that. It's important that our teachers obviously understand and have the resources to meet the PA learning standards. And it's also important, as, as we have seen because of our scores not being at or above state average, that we are currently looking at modifying our literacy and our mathematics and our technology curriculum. So, obviously, that'll be a point to, to look at as far as what we do in those particular areas and the changes that we make and how that influences student achievement as we move into the next, the next school year. We also want to develop an assessment framework that aligns to the vision of a graduate. We want to be able to put the tools in place for our teachers and our staffs to use so that we can best assess our kids so that in turn, we can best assess our graduates in college and career readiness as they work their way to the high school. And finally, with, with the professional development, we want to continually monitor what comes out of our professional learning communities to inform instruction. We want our teachers to report out of the good things that are happening, their concerns, and constantly make, making real-time changes to their classroom instruction. And again, these will all be posted. You'll have an opportunity to view the acts and steps. You'll, you'll be able to see what our administrators and directors are doing on a daily, weekly basis, monthly basis regarding these particular goals. And the goal three is the finance goal. Obviously, tonight, you saw we have a budget gap of 1.2 million. Dave and I, the administrative team, are going to continue to work on this gap to basically balance the budget with a planned use of fund balance and property tax increase that reflects, maintains the integrity of the instructional programs and co-curricular activities. Also, another goal that we have to target this year is to work under our, with our expenditure variance. It's important that we continually look at how well we budget. And we want to obviously make sure that we continue to look at, at those estimates and do a better job at the end of the year when we do do our audit. I had an opportunity, obviously, with Mr. Nestor to sit in with that this year, and we want to make sure that we, we do the best job possible when it comes to our expenditures and limit that to 3% or under. And also, one of the goals that we have within our administrative team is to increase spending, the, the spending of mandated, non-mandated expenses of our budget to less than, less than 1%. And we're going to get a little bit more specific with that goal as we move forward into our Operations and Facilities Committee, and we'll talk about some of those things that we actually do have control over and how we do manage and budget for that. And finally, the creation of a satisfaction survey for parents, staff, and everybody else. I think everybody else is the people in the community that, that they don't always take advan, not take advantage, they have taken advantage because they've raised their children. But I think it's important that we reach out to everybody and every stakeholder group. And I think that was really, came out clear in our, in our strategic planning meeting that we have a lot of people in our district, a lot of community members that need to have a voice and be part of our vision. So, we're going to, we're going to look at that specifically for our overall communications, budget communications, new initiative communications, how we, how we do business face-to-face or electronically, our new initiatives that we might have. Those are some things that we're going to look at and obviously some surveys specifically to our teachers and how they feel about, you know, what's going on in their, in their buildings from really, it's a soup to nuts, you know, from, from safety to curriculum to the job of the administrative leader in their building. I think it's important that we, we get a, basically a clear vision of that. So, that was something that I'll be specifically working on myself to be able to reach out to my, you know, other superintendents that have been through this process and find best practice so that we can, we can start the process. So, I'm excited about the goals. I'm excited about the focus. The, the teachers and administrators have really done an excellent job this year from the start of, of working and supporting each other in a collaborative mode to increase student achievement, to improve the professional development. We continue to work on the budget as we started tonight, and obviously, it's important that we communicate and provide timely feedback. So, I'm excited about it and thank you for your time.
So, I'll just, Bill, I, I want to make a comment that, well, first off, you, you just got through in less than 10 minutes. What I know, you put a lot more, a lot more than.
You promised me five minutes today.
Was it? We maybe fell short by a minute or two of the, of the five-minute goal, but I know, I know that hours and hours of work went into this. The one thing that I'll just immediately point out that I appreciate is that we've, we've asked for a long time now for measurable goals, and that's what you've given us here. So, we know exactly where we stand. I mean, the most important objective I think we can have is student achievement, and that's the first one that you addressed and you tack measurables to it. I like the approach that we're taking where we want to look at, we need to, we need to achieve that static line. We want to be at or above state average in, in all areas, and we're not right now. I think that's an honorable first step, but also looking at growth. So, if we're at or above that state average, but we're static there, that's also not going to be achieving the target that, that you're setting. So, it's, it's, it's a dual target. And I just want to say that it's, it's much appreciated from, from me personally that we're looking at measurable goals now where we've taken the time to, to look at where we're starting and where we want to get to. There's a detailed plan on the actions we're going to take on how to get there, and I know they're going to be evaluated periodically. If they're not getting us where we need to be and we need to readjust, that's the, that's the cycle. But we're starting from a good spot with, with measurable goals, which, which we've waited a long time for, so thank you.
I just have to add, ditto. It's been a long time that we've been asking for this. So, I wanted to personally also thank you, Dr. Schirck, for, for so readily agreeing to the request and working on it as you did. And you and your staff are all to be commended for, for this. These are modest goals, and, and yet, they will be challenging and, and I think it's important to have goals and important to be able to measure them. And so, hats off to you. So, of course, now the hard part.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a comment on, I agree with Matt and Rick. Nice positive change in regards to looking at student achievement and having specific numbers to shoot for. I look forward to us meeting quickly, meeting the first objective in grades three, three through eight, getting at or above the state average. I don't, when I look at the state average numbers, and this isn't a criticism on the goal itself, the state averages are nothing to be too proud of as far as the state goes. So, I look forward to meeting that. And as I believe Matt said, really, at that point, look, and what you said, really looking at growth and increasing that growth. A comment in regards to looking how we budget and expenses. I continued to be bothered prior to being on the board and my first year on the board and now. I, I don't agree with the mentality. I think it's wrong and inappropriate that we have a mentality of the lowest possible tax increase is possible. I, I think that's the wrong way to look at tax incre, or, yeah, the wrong way to look at increasing taxes. To me, that's the very last step, and I don't believe you're saying it's not the last step. But that should be kind of an emergent type thing that we look at as a very last resort. I don't like having that wording personally in any type of, you know, philosophy, objective. I believe it's the wrong way to look at it. And if we are voting on the goals, I don't know that they require vote, I'll be voting though simply for that purpose. It's not that I disagree with any of your other goals. Thank you.
Actually, I would like to, the recommended action, I would like you to approve the 2016-17 superintendent goals as, as submitted.
Second, second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further comments or questions?
Congratulations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
So, moving on to personnel, the first item on the personnel agenda is the administrative appointment of Dr. William Schirck. And I would like to make the motion to recommend that Dr. William Schirck Jr. be appointed to serve in the capacity of district superintendent from January 24th, 2017 through June 20th of the year 2020 at a salary of $178,000 per year and that the Board of School Directors approves the employment contract for Dr. Schirck as submitted.
Second, second.
Two seconds, two seconds.
We have a motion and a few seconds. Do we have comments or questions at this point about this motion?
I have a comment. Comment is, congratulations, Dr. Schirck. I think you've done a tremendous job in your acting role, and I personally am thrilled that, that we're in this place at this time and able to, to make this vote in, and appoint you our superintendent. And I haven't felt so good about the future of Pots Grove in a long time. So, congratulations in advance.
I'll, I'd like to echo Rick's remarks and say thank you, Dr. Schirck, for the work you've done in the past six months or so and giving us the confidence to move forward with this motion. So, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Congratulations, Dr. Schirck.
First of all, I want to thank the, thank the board of directors for having the confidence in me to, as I said to my staff, move us forward. I think it's very important that we work together. I think one of the things we've done in six months is we, we've collaboratively have, have, have talked with one another and worked with one another at the board level, at the, at the, at the district office level, and obviously with the directors and the principals, and most importantly, really, the teachers, because they bought into the process that, that, you know, as you all know, foundationally, the foundation of any, any home is really what counts. And I think that that's one of the things that, that we established right out of the gate, that our foundation and our teachers was what is going to move this district forward. And they have spent a tireless amount of time and effort do, looking into data, looking into what works for kids, making corrections in the classroom at real time, and at the same time, you know, taking the time to evaluate our math because we have concerns, evaluate our ELA because we have concerns, and really take the time to, to get it right. So, there's going to be more to follow when it comes to that in the next couple of months, but I think you're going to be pleasantly surprised with the work that we have done and the recommendations that we have for you. Tonight, it's, it's cliches, but it's so true in my life that behind every good, good man is a great woman. And my wife is with me tonight, as soon as you need to stand. You do. Yeah. And, you know, when you talk, when you talk about a foundation, someone that, that I've known for 36 years and been married to for 33 is, and has put up with a lot of different things because my career's taken many different turns, and they've all been for the good. And she has been part of every step of that way for me and my family. So, it's, you know, I'm here for a lot of reasons, and she's a big part of that reason. And I always say, you know, organizationally, it's, it's not about me, it's about us, and it's about we. When it comes to my wife and I, it's about, it's about her. So, I just want to share that because I don't have that opportunity, really, to, to share, to share, and I think that it's important that it's worked because of the commitment we've made. Obviously, you know, in our, in our work life, obviously, been our, in our personal life and then, of course, in our family life. So, we thank you for the opportunity, really, to, to be here tonight and, and move this thing forward. So, thank you very much. Move it, move it on. We wanted to continue with personnel action items and take a look at our support staff. We have a retirement. The recommendation is to approve the support staff retirement as submitted.
Move to combine all personnel.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to combine the rest of personnel. Comments or questions on any of the items? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Moving to action, action items under business, we would like you to approve the purchase of an indoor batting cage from Beacon Athletics at a cost of $4,340.
I'd like to make that motion, but caveat it that the money come from Market Street Funds.
I'll second that. I was just waiting to see if Mr. Nestor had a comment.
I was gonna.
Okay. I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. Comments or questions?
Can you refresh my memory at least and for the public, Market Street Funds?
I don't have the, the current balance, but Market Street is a sponsorship organization that recruits sponsors for various athletic facilities within the district, and we have set that money aside. We track it separately, and we can use it for whatever we wish to use it for, but historically it's been primarily for athletics and co-curricular activities. I want to say we have in the neighborhood of $100,000 in the account at this point.
My question was going to be regarding, was this budgeted for, but based on Rick's motion, I will be in agreement with it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
The River Rock Academy, it's a contracted agreement. Recommend approval of an agreement with River Rock Academy. It's a private licensed elementary program for one student at per diem rate of $173 for a total approximate cost of $18,165 for the remainder of the 2016-17 school year.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
The phototeric system for Pots Grove High School, it's solar panels. We would like to award a bid for design and installation of the phototactic system, producing a millennium of 60 kilowatt of solar powered energy, renewable energy solutions at the amount not to exceed $133,131 contingent, and I'm going to add to this, contingent upon the review of our lead consultants because they haven't had the opportunity yet to, to review this. This is the, our lowest responsible bidder.
Motion and a second. Any questions?
Only question I had was, do we have an idea of where we are in the lead, possibly making sure we get the gold standard and we get the grant?
Can I just tack on to that? Is this necessary to get there?
Yes, and yes. Our consultant is maintaining a score sheet, if you will, as we go through the project. Certainly, we need to have some things tied up. Our, our mechanical systems need to be balanced properly, and we're still having some challenges with that. So until we can get that resolved, we're not going to submit, but everything, assuming we can resolve that, we do need this to get two or three points in this calculation, but we are on target to pass.
And just to refresh everybody's memory, how much was the grant going to be awarded?
The grant was $2 million. We've received it. So we have, we've received it and we have spent it, so we better get to retain it.
So I just have one more question, and, and I apologize if this has been answered in some previous meeting, but why is this sitting outside of the, the rest of the renovation project?
It wasn't intended to. It was part of the electrical contractors' bid specifications as we were going through. Quite frankly, this should have been done a year ago. They delayed and delayed and delayed, and at the end of August, they came to us with a price that was substantially more than what we had incorporated in our budget for this. So we had removed it from, we gave him as many opportunities as we could to refine his price and bring it in within our range. He failed to do so, so we took the work away and we went out and subcontracted it.
All right, well, I have a follow-up then. I mean, just correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't the way this whole construction thing work, the contractor makes a bid, and then we have to award it to them if they're the lowest responsible bidder, and then they have to deliver the work? Isn't that usually how it works?
That is.
So in this case, they made the bid, and then they couldn't deliver on the bid and came back to us after the fact asking for more money? Is that what I'm understanding correctly?
That's correct.
So is there some legal liability associated with their non-compliance with their contract?
Since we're getting it for less than what they were able to supply it for, I don't think so. I'll defer to Mr. Davis.
Oh, in other words, we're getting it for less than the, the amount that was bid initially?
Yes.
Okay.
Less, less than the budget that we incorporated.
So the only issue is time, really?
Yes.
Okay.
Essentially, we dissolved the agreement between us and them.
I'll ask the answer, Mr. President. Thank you.
Just a com, just a comment. Great job, Mr. Nestor and the, the team in recognizing this and taking a stance on it. Thank you.
Okay, so if there are no further questions, we'll need to make our votes. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 7.1 through 7.4.
So motion and a second to combine 7.1 through 7.4. Any questions? Al, you were, you're okay with the conference?
Already talked to everybody. We're good.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. 7.1 through 7.4, pass.
Okay, 7.5 mentor teachers, approve the mentor teacher as submitted.
The motion and a second for 7.5. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
I'd also like to make a motion that we approve 7.6 through 7.12. Can we pull out?
Pull out? Eight and nine.
Okay.
Say that again, Pat.
So I'd make a motion that we approve 7.6, 7.7, 7.10, 7.11, and 7.12.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. 7.6, 7.7, and then 7.10 through 12.
We discussed this at, at committee, but for the public's sake, can we summarize what we're voting on for, for, for the public's sake?
Thanks. Yes. Thank you, Bill. Let me just back it up here a second. What we're, what we're approving, what you're approving tonight basically is the new, new course proposals for the high school program of study. We are, basically, you're, you are allowing us to move forward, to obviously place them in the program of study and, you know, take the necessary steps needed regarding, in some cases, regarding curriculum, in some cases regarding expenses to that particular curriculum, but it allows us to, as you see, to add to our advanced placement curriculum. Also, it bolsters electives in our social studies program, and then up for conversation. We've talked about recommendations because we have met throughout the fall and this winter regarding our math curriculum at the high school versus the current curriculum and where we'd like to see that go. And that's with 7.8 and 7.9. And then, of course, one of the things that we are proposing is in the arts, to increase the course, courses that are in the choir area of advanced choir, men's choir, and women's choir. We're trying to create more opportunities for students to get involved in our music program, and we feel having more sections that pertain to these areas will, will help increase that.
Just a shout-out to Dr. Ziegler and his team. When we heard in detail these courses at our committee meeting, I, for one, and I believe the committee was quite impressed with, with what they're bringing on here. So great job. And just a quick comment on expenses, really. When we looked at it, it's pretty much a wash because we're not spending what we spent last year on new courses, so, yeah, thank you.
Just one quick little thing. I am very excited to see that we're advancing choir, men's choir, and women's choir. Years ago, we used to have the Groves Men here, and we did have a, a women's choir, and the advanced choir is really going to push those students to that next level and prepare them for college, and I think that's excellent.
I also think the, the AP government course is a, is a smart choice for, for a number of reasons, and certainly timely, given the attention to the political world of the last year. It certainly has included our students, so I think it's a good, it's a good add, for sure. So I'm pretty, I think it's a, also, this year, we have a pretty moderate set of additions, you know, just one AP course, which is good because we're still sort of consolidating around all the other AP courses that we've added. So I think this is good, personally. I'm enthused.
And I only have one more comment or maybe a question, but this is, this is the recommendation of the committee as well.
Yes.
I thought it was, just wanted to put it out there that.
I'll, real quick, and I mean, like, really quick cover at the meeting minutes, which was a little bit later, and because we're already approving it. One of the things that wasn't mentioned, and I may as well just say it now, is that the AP government class is actually also going to be counted as our civics class, so a student will have the opportunity to take AP straight through if they want it, or they can go with many other progressions, as we've already put in the board docs, and we made sure that all of the board had that to see the different progressions available and such. So it was completely approved by all four of the committee plus other members that were at the board.
Thanks, and I'll, I'll just say, I think the committee's been doing a great job with planning and collaborating with the admin, and good things are coming out of that. So thank you for the, all the hard work. I know those meetings are long. Without any further comments or questions, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. So back to 7.8 and 7.9.
Correct. The high school course proposal for Algebra 1A, 7.8, approve this course proposal as submitted.
Second.
I suspect.
Do we want to combine 7.8 and 7.9 then?
Okay.
I just want to ask, who is intended to take this course? And what, I might be anticipating Bob's questions, if, and what controls will be placed on the size of the population that goes into the 1A and 1B versus what we'll call traditional algebra? Because we're not getting rid of traditional algebra, right? So, so can you explain that?
Yeah. What I like, what I like to do is have Mr. Disforis come up and just sit, we'll, we'll chat, you know, together. But what, this, this came out of work from our current 1.5 algebra, and we had the opportunity, and Mr. Dany, maybe you want to slide up or will up, I guess, as well, because he was part, he's part of, he's part of the process as well. We had time, we, we took the fall to really meet with our math teachers and, and drill it down to where we currently are at 1.5, and, and we looked at the needs of our, of our children. And the recommendation that came from the 1A and 1B was, there's a select group of students that need the extra time to be successful in algebra in the classroom. And it go, and foundationally, they, they need, need a year. They need two years with, with, with the, with the ability of teachers to, to, you know, integrate instructional text needs that meet those needs of those specific children. And we, we feel good about it from the standpoint that these students will be selected. I mean, we're not, you don't really opt in to this. This is not an area to fall back into. You don't get to go back, you know, if things aren't working out in Algebra 1, you don't get to opt back into one, Part 1 or Part 2. You know, we feel we're not giving these, these students are students who, who after taking Algebra 1, really don't have a, it's not fair to take the, the static, you know, Keystone test. They really need to take it after, after the second year. And I, I really think that there was a lot of, there was a lot of conversations. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't an easy decision, you know, with our staff to come up with this, and we also wanted not to discriminate, if you will, to the students who are NCAA-bound because they have that NCAA requirement of three math credits. So this will still allow them to meet that requirement and to get three years of math and get really a solid foundation of Algebra 1, geometry, and Algebra 2, which, which we feel with this particular group would be a great, great support as far as being that college and career ready. So that's an intro. There's, there's more specifics, and, and Daniel and Eric, if you just, if there's anything I missed overall that would pinpoint, you know, some of the why this, this group came up, that would be great.
I think you did a great job summarizing. I think it's important to note that endless hours were spent with math department at the high school, and they really struggled, if you will, with the decision, not struggled, but went through, had a lot of dialogue, continual dialogue about what it would look like. They were looking, one of the things that they were looking at is looking at the elimination of the 1.5. So they started with that in mind. The second piece was, they were looking at, how do we support all students? We're not just looking at students at the top, we're not just looking at students in the middle, nor just at the bottom. We wanted to make sure that there were supports in place for all students in terms of their mathematical learning, all learning, but in this case, mathematical learning. It was the recommendation of the entire department, so we did have a meeting two weeks ago, maybe, with the entire department to get their formal, if you will, recommendation. An important piece of this is it's not for all students. We're talking about approximately 40 students that I would call reluctant math learners, students who need some additional learning time to really truly understand the conceptual and the procedural fluency related to Algebra 1. And providing them that learning over a two-year period of time allows them to, allows teachers' time to slow the pace, but continue the, the same level of rigor in terms of understanding those particular concepts. The other piece is, we were looking at, and the department has already talked about, how do we look at, as Dr. Shirk said, how do you get into this? So we're, we're currently looking at those measures to have clearly identified criteria, and that would be explain to students in middle school and high school and with families in terms of what that looks like. But that could be just a placement kind of test. Teacher recommendation is a huge piece. Parent communication is a huge piece and all that. So those were a, a couple of additional things that I thought of just as Dr. Shirk was talking.
Yeah, I mean, our, the premise here from our math department is, and as Daniel said and as Dr. Shirk said, is to give that student who needs that more time, the more time, number one. And with that, to, again, use multiple criteria, not just one, you know, eighth grade PSSA math, boom, here's where you work, here's the funnel, you're going that way, to use multiple criteria to make sure, you know, that we're getting the right students into that class so that we can be supportive of them, to get them, you know, if they are one, two, three years behind in their math progression, get their back up to speed so that they're ready, you know, if they're looking to go on to college, to take that SAT, to take that ACT, to, you know, do what we can to support that math learner as they move through our, our progression here at the high school.
So did I hear you say, then, that the 1.5 goes away?
Correct.
Right. So this year, we have all ninth grade algebra students taking 1.5 credits. So next year, we would have the larger percentage taking one credit algebra, and then this smaller percentage of 40 or so anticipated students taking two, two years worth rather than a 1.5 in ninth grade.
So a lot of the conversation that came around from our teachers was that we have, you know, a, a large portion of the group in that 1.5 that might be able to, and they're showing that they're able to move at a quicker pace to cover some of that material that don't necessarily need that additional 0.5 going through, but we do have, then, some students that could use actually more than that 1.5. And what this will do is this will put together a two-year sequence of a full credit in a ninth grade year, followed by a full credit in the 10th grade year, while allowing the other group to kind of really free up a lot, you know, some really good segments where we're, we're getting them into those choirs, we're getting them into those arts, some of those things for those students that might not necessarily be that math person, but that art program really draws them in. So we'll be freeing up a lot of those spaces as well, and we're excited about those opportunities. So, we'll be freeing up a lot of those spaces as well, and we're excited about those opportunities.
The only thing I would ask the administration to do would be to keep track, as we're using the ECRAP program, to, when we start using the ECRAP program, to keep track of how the Keystone test results have progressed from the 1.5, so we understand what that baseline was. Then we'll have a new baseline of the 1.0, and then even a third baseline of the .5 and .5, to make sure that we're actually doing the best for our students, based on what we had.
Absolutely.
It won't actually be a .5 and a .5, though, right? It'll be two one-credit courses. So, it's two full math credits.
Yes.
Okay.
It's only for NCWA, Claire and House said, it takes the .5 for their Algebra 1 requirement.
It's the five days.
Yes.
I understand the intentions. I think they're great intentions. I would request that if the enrollment in this class goes up to greater than 45 in either year, that you report back to the board. All right? Thank you.
I actually, we talked about combining, but I didn't before a motion and a second was made. So, right now, we'll vote on the motion separately. Seven point eight is the proposal for Algebra 1A. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
No.
Motion passes eight to one.
For high school course proposal, Algebra 1 Part B, to approve the course proposal as submitted.
Motion and a second for Part B. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
No.
Motion passes eight to one.
Okay, moving on to committee items. First of all, eight point one, Operations and Facilities Committee. We ask that you accept the minutes of the Operations and Facilities Committee that was held on November 15, 2016, as submitted.
Second. Motion and a second to accept the minutes. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Curriculum Technology Student Affairs Committee, from January 17. I know you touched on some things, so feel free to add to that.
So, obviously, as everybody already knows, we spent the bulk of our entire committee on the course selection, so I'm going to just skip right over that, there's no reason to go through those again. The remaining part of the meeting was generally going to be just updating on the curriculum review, that we're going to be full-going into our next meeting. We have the ELA project, and we have the math curriculum project. As we understand that over the course of September through now, Daniel has given the ELA project to go through all of the different teachers, to have their decision on how, what curriculum we're going to go with. Daniel had his favorites, but he wanted to make sure that the teachers were the ones to choose this. So, they went through their progress, have gotten it narrowed it down to three or four, then they narrowed it down to now two. And as of the time when we did the curriculum committee, they actually had all of the material in their hand, so they would actually go through which one they're actually going to choose. This will then be brought to the curriculum committee to fully go through with the cost of investment and the reasons for being chosen. So, our next meeting is going to be a rather large one, because we're going to be going through predominantly, if I'm not mistaken, both the ELA and the math curriculum choices. So, it's definitely going to be something that I invite all of the board members to be, because we're obviously going to be voting on that very soon, and it is probably going to be a larger expense, especially since we're completely going through the ELA and the math. Also, we wanted to make sure that the teachers, obviously, one of the biggest things I think the curriculum committee was worried about, was the fact that the teachers have always came to us and said to us, hey, you're throwing too much, you're doing this, you're doing that. Well, in this particular circumstance, it actually was the opposite. The teachers actually have decided that, since they're actually the ones picking the curriculum for the math and the ELA, they wanted to have it all. They wanted to actually do it all right then and there, and not do it piecemeal, like at one time, we thought maybe they would want. So, they're actually completely 100% on board for everything. And generally, the timeframe, like I said, is going to be February 21st, is going to be the next meeting. Mr. Voorhees and everybody else is going to be meeting over the course of the time between now and then, and then it'll come back to us.
Can I just add, I would really encourage the community to attend that meeting as well, to really, I mean, it's going to have a big impact, so if you want to come out and hear what we're hearing.
I want to say, Al, you specifically just addressed one of my concerns, and I did make a phone call to Dr. Shirk about it earlier this week, which is one of the concerns I always bring up, which is too much, too fast, all at one time.
Obviously.
Can we handle it? And I was assured, as I am again, that this is something that everybody wants, thinks they can handle, and is willing to hold themselves accountable to, once we go ahead and make this move. So, I'm happy to hear that, I'm happy that everybody's behind it, and that you guys are, you know, marking and monitoring that, too, in committee. So, thank you.
Moving on to new business. I just wanted to take the opportunity, to go first, if I may, to talk about, and I know some of you have been involved with this, actually, because we've seen it out there on the web, the Pots Grove High School Fall Let Challenge. We have taken, Danny Small, our librarian, has put together a video regarding our Makerspace. And just those of you who don't know about our Makerspace, it's a problem-solving area that we have in our library. It deals with science, technology, engineering, math. It has a little bit of an art flair, it gives our students an opportunity to brainstorm. We have a 3D printer that can create some of those brainstorms, if you will. And it also gives our students a chance to collaborate, and really transform our library into something more than just going in for books and checking out in a meeting place. So, we're excited about it. The total prize value could be up to, it's $200,000 in the pot. If we're one of the top schools in the first round, it would be an $8,000 grant. And if we make our way to the semifinals, we could, there's two semifinals worth $30,000 each, and then, of course, the grand prize is $60,000. And one of the things that I know our librarian, Danny Small, wanted us to bring out tonight was the fact that, you know, vote often, as many email addresses as you can. If you go to our website, and it's right there on the district webpage, Fall Let Challenge, click on it, vote as many times as you can participate, because a lot of last year, she looked into it, and it really had to do with how well the community supported it. So, I know some of you have supported it, I just wanted to bring it up tonight to the board and to our public, and our hope is that maybe we can land a grant.
I just want to add that, you know, when Pots Grove is up against several other sports teams, to get our game televised on Friday night, we get amazing participation. And there's no money for that, other than we get to see our kids play, and not that that's not a wonderful thing. But here, we have the chance to win grants that will have real meaning to our students. And we're lagging, to be honest, based on what I saw from Mrs. Small. So, you know, I just want to say, I voted six times today. I've got, and six times yesterday. You could do it from Facebook, you can do it, and then you could do it for each individual email address. And it's annoying, they send a code to the email address that you've got to then enter in, so it takes three minutes instead of 30 seconds. But if, we should be doing way better. We have very technologically competent people in this school district, and our kids need our support. So, please, vote every day, and let's at least be somewhere in the running, because right now, we're way behind. I'm frankly embarrassed. So, there.
And I'll just add to what Rick said. You can get there, and you can vote. Don't vote without watching that video.
Yeah.
It's a fantastic video. When you watch that video and see what we're doing, you will be motivated to vote six times a day, and to spread the word, to get other people to go and take a look. So, if you do get out there, take the, I think it's, if it's a five-minute video, it's five minutes of your day well-spent. I've watched it more than once, but it's great things going on. So, help out and go watch the video. You'll find it hard not to be inspired to vote every day after seeing it, I think. Was that the only thing?
That's all.
I had a couple of things that I wanted to get really quickly. Last, two weeks ago, we had a comment about the agendas, and if we could get more information on the agenda, instead of just the bullet points. I'm not sure if Mrs. Neeson's still out there.
Just not sure.
Okay. Oh, I wanted to make sure, is that we hit it on the head this time around? So, I'll follow up with her, but I think the agendas this meeting have a lot more information on them than they had previously, since we switched over to the board docs format. The other thing, and I don't know if we, somebody already covered my concern, but on committee reporting, what I wanted to request, if this is okay with the committee chairs, is that we don't report out on meetings that we just had that night. So, I find it difficult for policy and athletics, if we meet before the, if we meet just before this meeting, to take effective notes and report that effectively to the rest of the board and to the rest of the public. If we could schedule, for example, policy wasn't on to report out tonight.
Right.
And that was good, because that's what I wanted to get at. If I can have those two weeks to put a better report out together, if that's okay with the rest of the committee chairs, if we can, okay. Thank you.
I also wanted to request that there's a JOC.
Just going to add it. Yep. Thank you.
I had a couple of quick things. Dr. Shirk, if you could just let the full board know what the result is of what you find out in regards to transportation during midterms to the tech center? I'd appreciate that. Second thing I've been wanting to bring up, but due to time, haven't. What's the board's feeling on committee meetings being taped, if it would fit in with what the TV studio, the high school kids are doing here? If it could be part of their project, if the teacher would be interested in having his students do that? I'd love to see the committee meetings be taped like ours are, and then put maybe on our district site. Is there any thoughts to that? And that would be if the high school, you know, if there was interest-
If the students would want to do it, and it doesn't cost anything, I would love it. Welcome.
As one of the people who fought really hard to have these meetings televised, I kind of like not having the committee meetings televised. It's not that, they're open to the public, anybody can come, but I feel that the cameras do have an impact on the frankness with which people speak. And so, I'd be a little reticent to, I mean, our curriculum meetings, for example, we have wonderful participation from our teachers of late, and a lot of discussion that is, you know, I just don't know if we would get the same level of discourse with the cameras on there. So, that's my reticence to the idea, you know, though there's always a benefit to it as well, of making it more available to people who want to watch. So, that's my concern.
And I'll say, I hear what Rick's saying. I think, though, I don't, I think it's a fine idea, and I don't know how we make it work, whether it's, you know, project-based with the TV students, or if it's Gus that come, you know, coming in for extra time. But I think-
He's so happy about that.
Sorry, Gus.
I think the answer there is, I don't think so.
So, I'm not opposed to making it happen, and I hear what Rick is saying, and what you're talking about is just basic human nature, and I think, you know, if we want to do it, and we want to be transparent, then we just have to be, we have to try to commit to step up to the plate and make it happen. But we're not the only people involved in those meetings, as you said. So, I think it warrants more discussion, but just my general feeling, since you asked for everybody's opinion, is I wouldn't be opposed to it.
And I would just, logistically, I would just obviously want to, you know, meet with our staff, our tech staff, and look, you know, obviously be part of that process. Yeah.
I'd just like to add something real quick, that I almost forgot about. A couple of weekends ago, Al and I attended the football banquet, and again, it was a phenomenal time. They inducted four football alumni into the Football Hall of Fame, and hearing their stories, and having them coming back was just remarkable. And I'd like to shout out, thank you to Mr. Penny Packer and the Football Falcon Moms' Clubs. And I would like to recognize the football team for their championship, and I know we had that coming up, but it was a beautiful banquet. And it was like four hours that just went like that. It was just very inspirational, seeing all of our students, and seeing proud parents, and I think what really hit me is having the alumni come back, and they all played collegiate ball. And they, one of their fondest memories, that they were explaining to all of our younger athletes, was very inspirational, you know, talking about the camps and some of the things, the inside things, but it was a beautiful banquet. And I love going to the banquets, and it's kind of one of the fruits that we get, you know, our perks, just seeing the kids just having a great time. So, I just wanted to shout out and thank them.
And then I have one last thing we're going to do, I'm going to do a little self-promotion for the Athletic Booster Club. Coming up on February 3rd and 4th, and I'm asking this for the public to possibly help, this school's going to be holding the District Duels Wrestling Tournament. It's the, like I said, it's February 3rd and February 4th, and this particular money is actually going to be something that I'm trying not to go to the board for, and asking for the public to pay for. When the school district did the turf field, they never put in for a concession stand. So, you have this elaborate-looking field, and it's beautiful, but there's no concession stand for any of the team clubs, nor for the boosters that actually try to hold anything. So, we've always had to try to hold it either through just the table, or using the trainer room. So, what the Booster Club has decided to do is, we would like to raise the funds to actually build the concession stands. And what we're looking to do is, to do this, we're going to be used, we need to raise about $4,000 roughly, because we're going to put on a rap and everything on this, so it's going to have all the kids' pictures, it's going to have a lot of different things. It's going to be a little bit different than a concession stand you would normally see, because we want to make sure that it has a lot of Pots Grove pride in this concession stand. So, what we're asking for, pretty much, is either volunteers, or donations and food that we can sell during the concessions of the District Duels. That's all we're looking for, is time or food that you can make and donate. So, if you have ability to make cookies, brownies, baked ziti, fried chicken, wing, I don't care, whatever we can make, and then if you could email me at thepotsgroveboosters@gmail.com, my wife or I will actually get back to you and say all the different things we have. If you have time, because obviously, with the amount of people, we're expecting upwards of 600 people to attend, it's with 10 different teams, please- of 600 people to attend, it's with 10 different teams, please also give us a shout-out because we need, you know, an hour and a half slots is what we're putting everybody in. Obviously, I'll be there the entire time, and some other people will be there the entire time, but if we can just get an hour and a half on a Friday night or the Saturday, that would be great. Thank you very much.
What are the times?
The times for Friday are going to be from startup is 2:45 to approximately around seven, eight o'clock, which would be clean-up-ish, and on Saturday, the starting time to set up would be around 11:00 because the event starts at 1:00 with weigh-ins and such, and ending would be right around 5:00 PM.
Any other new business? Moving on to answers to previous questions, we just, we did, did put really for your information last time as far as the pre-first grade. We talked about that. We still have more work to do, Mrs. Custer, on that. We did have the opportunity to speak to several of our principals, and I know that Mr. Voorhees wants to talk more specifically to some of our teachers who were involved in that program before it went to all decade, so we're still, we're still going to work on that. And then we gave you that update in your board doc information. As far as the community service on the web, I have an opportunity, we're going to meet with our administrative team tomorrow to discuss how, you know, a lot of, a lot of times, our information is specific to the buildings. So what we want to try to do is tie some of those big highlights, get them back on the district page so that people don't, can look at the district page versus funneling through a building to a specific event. So we're going to talk more to our administrators about how we get some of the highlights, if you will, from each building and onto the district page. For example, the Fall Let Challenge was something we, was on a high school site, but we wanted to put that on the district site, so we made, made some small, small moves there. We had an opportunity tonight to talk about the hazing, the hazing policy. We took that back to committee. Obviously, we discussed that, you know, more, more in detail tonight. And then, Mr. Parker, you brought up information regarding cars running bus lights, you know, last time as well. I know Mr. Nestor had the opportunity to reach out to CMD to specifically pinpoint any specific routes that we could then funnel that information to our local police authorities. I had an opportunity to meet with the cheese this past week on some other safety issues, and really, they just need the information. I mean, if there's, there's some hot routes, they'll be more than happy to talk to the patrol officers in helping, in helping us out. So, Mr. Nestor, was there anything that I missed regarding that report? Okay. Thank you.
I just request, Mr. Nestor, as you're speaking to them. If we could set up and that this not be a one-time thing, but that the management over there get to their drivers and say, we need to know when there's ongoing issues and so we know there's follow-up. Also, just want to conclude my comments by saying, thank you, thank you, thank you, Dr. Shirk. For many months, I sat here and listened to many of us asking questions and would come to the next meeting with not, without hearing any feedback, without ever seeing any answers to previous inquiries, inquiries put in there. So thank you for the follow-up, not seeing it or treating it as a burden, but taking our requests and concerns seriously. Thank you.
Moving on from answers to previous inquiries, do we have any requests for public comment on non-agenda items? Okay, then with that, we will, we will adjourn the meeting.